Well, you know that I'm Timothy Gray and I live in South Palo Alto. I'm best known as the father of Michael and Julia and Catherine. You know, and sometimes people don't even know my first name. And additionally, I'm known as the husband of Susan Gray, who works at the Lucille Packard Children's Hospital. And in the last election, having a conflict of interest with the Stanford campus limited my involvement in the election. And this time, that has been very positively resolved. And so I can give it more of a full thrust and I'm ready to do the work. I really want to keep it more simple and focus on financial balance. There's a problem, I think, in that we've chronically overspent and we haven't set enough aside for our infrastructure reserves. And I think that it accumulates one little innocuous amount at a time and then all of a sudden, it can force a crisis. And I really want to see some financial discipline before we move forward with trying to ask our children through a bond issue to pay for it. So spending a little bit less.
So can you tell us a little bit about your professional background? Because that is in finance.
Yes, I'm raised as a CPA. I originally came here to Palo Alto to work with the Lucille Packard Children's Hospital. And that was when David and Lucille Packard donated $100 million and then summed to start a new facility. I was involved in the first 10 years of operations in building the finance team. And I have left in 1997 at the time of the merger with another institution and have been an independent consultant to both children's hospitals and also as an advisor to companies that have mergers and acquisitions.
So you were here during the proposed merger with UCSF?
Yes, I left the very day before that consummated. I did not see the wisdom, but there's no-
It turned out to be right, since it didn't happen.
You know, Bill, I work with companies all over the nation in getting things fixed. And there's never been a currency in being able to say, "I told you so." There's no currency in being right, you know? It really is being able to make a good decision and move on. And I voted with my consciousness at that time. And I think I continue to do that.
So tell us how you think the political city council would be a different body with you on it. What would you bring, given how they now operate, the points of view that are represented on it? Where would you fit in and how would you add value to the council?
Well, you know, one person is only one of nine voices. So it's kind of like a one-rudder on a nine-rudder ship. So you can't fool yourself into thinking you're going to come in with an agenda and make a change just from one vision. I'll probably be the worker on the council. They need a finance worker. I'm ready to do the work. I'm probably ready to say a few last words at the council meetings and get down to business. I'm, well, I have the professional opportunity and flexibility to spend a little bit more of my own personal time and put that extra effort so I can do more figuring out outside the meeting than inside the meeting. And I think that's what the community deserves. There's really no glamour in the position, as I see it, really is community service. And I'm trying to model community service for my three children, who are 10, 10, and 13, at Wanabrioni School. I have twins there. And then my daughter Catherine is at the middle school.
Who on the council currently, from your observations of their work, would you say currently serves that financial expertise role?
Well, I would say that Pat Burt has been the most willing to be the voice of financial discipline and being willing to take on some tough issues. I can't say that I agree with everything that Pat does, but I think that he has played that role. And I know that Greg Scharf, although I disagree with much of his development vision, he has also been a voice of financial reason and has been good for the council.
We obviously face, as do most municipalities, a big pension and health benefit, retirement health benefit challenge. You've identified that as an issue and you've addressed it in this survey. I wonder if you could sort of summarize where you think the council's next step should be in dealing with that problem. They've already gone to a two-tiered system. They've increased the employee contributions to healthcare. What's next and what's feasible, in your opinion, to get a better, to make more progress on this unfunded liability problem?
Well, obviously, we have to follow the rule of law, of contract law, to, you know, honor our agreements. So it really has to be a go-forward solution. I don't think we can undo a lot. Some of dealing with our unfunded pension liability and healthcare liability may mean that we have to cut some from operations and start dedicating some funds to that. I would definitely not be open to borrowing debt to fill in that gap. There may be some opportunities to look at compensation structure. There's some anecdotal information about certain positions that are significantly outlined with what the city is paying versus what is available in the open market. I think that there's room for us to pay top wages and recruit top talent and, you know, not neglect the employees, but still spend less money.
Is the problem, do you identify the problem as being a current compensation level issue or more the retirement liabilities that we have due to the pension program?
Well, I think there's more of the pension and also the healthcare. That went out in the 1960s and it's not even part of any kind of marketplace comparison.
For the retirees you're talking about?
For the retirees. And I'm not sure what the formula is, but I know that that's still available and citizens or the employees are still earning that lifetime healthcare. I wouldn't even know how to even buy that for us. I mean, that's something that's so far out of the market. And so I know that previously, if you questioned those things, you were seen as anti-labor and going against the employees and not being appreciative. And that's just simply not the way I feel. But I think that there's a room for a voice of reason and empirical data. And I'd like to see some information shared with the community about compensation structures. How much does that lifetime healthcare cost? What are the retirement benefits, say, compared to a Stanford or some other, you know, A-grade public employee? And share that with the community so that we can get down to what the true differences are. Because I know that there's some critics out there that just bash the city. And I don't think anybody is helped by the kind of conversations that go on at that level, you know? And so a good dose of truth and let the numbers speak for themselves. You know, I never, when I go into a consulting job, I never do the job before I get there. So I can't tell you, you know, exactly what that would look like. But I know the measures and I know that it always yields some truth. And you open the book, you look at it, and you share that information. And not everybody is able to share financial information on a very simplified basis. And I have about 25 years of being able to do that. I think that that's something that the city council and the citizens would benefit from. And I think that there could be more of a cohesive conversation based on my presence. Because I'm definitely not a voice of criticism. I know I've been depicted as a critic of this and a critic of this. And I've been willing to say some pretty hard truths. But it's not criticism just because it reflects poorly on something. If a fact reflects poorly on somebody, it's probably something that just is the desire to be nice kept it from being said.
You've advocated for a shift from the defined benefit characteristics of the current pension system in California to something more similar to the defined contribution plans that most of us in the private sector have, the 401ks and IRs and so forth. Is that a realistic proposal for municipal government at the current time? How would you get there?
Yeah, I can only imagine it'd have to be a two-tiered system where you would end the one. Because you have people who came to work for the city on good faith basis and are expecting a certain compensation level and they made a career choice because of that. To be respectful, you'd have to keep that going. Of course, if we don't make some changes and the whole system comes crashing down, then everybody's going to get hurt and we'll have to unwind contracts. But I think there's a humane way that if we stop and do some changes now, we can avoid that kind of crash and burn approach to solving it.
Another matter of social responsibility that you touched upon when we had you fill out the survey was the infrastructure costs of new development and whether or not that's paid for kind of upfront as part of the approval process versus infrastructure costs that are kind of ignored and accumulated later. So on the PC zone issue?
Right.
I'm wondering, what is your take on how that's working right now and what kind of reforms might be instituted by the council?
You know, if we could just limit that to the PC zones as it relates to infrastructure costs right now, as opposed to how high something should be or what density is appropriate. Those are different issues. But it seems like there could be an accountability for a certain portion of the infrastructure that, such as sewer and water, that needs to be paid if there's going to be an additional demand put on the system. When we, a person buys a piece of property in Palo Alto, you have your, kind of your rights or your constitution under the comprehensive plan. But when you go outside that, that one more toilet that flushes or whatever, that one more water demand is going to cause some infrastructure to have to be purchased in the future. And to give it away free is not appropriate. Schools is another thing. If there's a certain number of housing units that would have a certain population of students, shouldn't we prepay? And there's been models for that in other cities where development rights are, have come with a responsibility to fund the demand on the system. It was, it's seen as a fair measure.
Would that be quantified as some sort of development fee then, just like there's a parks fee?
I would certainly advocate that it'd be dedicated funding because there are so many times when things get put into a general funding and somehow, no matter how much money or fees come along, we find a way to spend them. So some real firewalls in those reserves so that they do get dedicated for a particular purpose. And, you know, I've worked with organizations that have funded their depreciation. Depreciation is incremental loss in value over time. So that at the time it comes to build a new facility, you have that cash in the bank. Because using the facility just because you own it rent-free doesn't mean that it's really free to the community. And so there's an accountability, a responsibility to the future that maybe would take away funds from our spending money, but is going to leave our children in a much better position.
Now, in addition to the infrastructure costs involved in the PC zone processes, the requirement for community benefits, do you think that the council has been wise and judicious in obtaining benefits that are really worth the developments that have been built recently or approved recently? Alma Plaza, Edgewood, Litton Gateway was just approved?
Yeah, I'm just now in the process of trying to evaluate what the ability to build an extra square foot of commercial space should be worth. What would a developer pay in the open market to go out and buy that land? Because we're giving them a right. And because we're giving that right to the sky, they're not having to buy that land. And so it's going to take a little bit more analysis for me to say, I think that Litton Plaza or Alma Plaza was given away too cheaply. It seems, though, that it should be a consistent formula and it shouldn't be a negotiation. And then there's another piece of the public benefit is that is a currency that belongs to the people of the city. And Bill, you might be interested in this, is that, so instead of the developer proposing how to spend it, perhaps the community, through a shared community vision, should have some priorities on how they want to spend it and then value the benefit and then let the community decide how they want to spend the money.
Well, theoretically, that's what is supposed to be happening. Because the comprehensive plan is supposed to have identified the kind of community we want to live in and the kind of benefits that we want to have, that developers then can try to interpret with their development proposal. But maybe we could get a little specific here with the two big ones that are now in front of us. We've got two very unique concepts here. One, where we get a public safety building out of the developer in exchange for them building substantially more than the zoning would allow. And in the other instance, we appear to have the opportunity to get a whole new transportation center and theater and whatnot as part of Ariaga's proposal to build these office towers. How would you go about evaluating those? What is, what's going to be your thought process on measuring the trade-off between those benefits and what the developers receiving?
Okay, well, there's two issues again. One is valuing the benefit on a money basis. And that was the formula I talked about of what would it cost to purchase land that would give you the right to build premium office space? And that's a known number. I agree with the need for new public safety building. But I do think that we need to explore a little more about regional cooperation and the overall complement of services that should be housed in it. So I'm not sure that it's correct for a developer to propose that it would, should be in that California Avenue corridor, which is already a little bit of a bottleneck traffic. You know, maybe the public safety building should be where they're proposing that the theater is. And is the theater, if we were to prioritize all our needs, including infrastructure funding, is that on the top of priority? Because if it wasn't on the top of the priority, it wouldn't be appropriate. Now, if somebody wanted to gift that, that's a whole different thing. But if we're spending a currency, which is a public asset, and the currency is the development rights to our sky and the density, that belongs to the community, we should be spending it in the same manner that we would be spending our tax revenue.
So I would, based on the other answers you've given, I would say that then you're not very supportive of this proposal at 27 University. Because clearly, you don't put the need for a new theater for theater works anywhere close to the top of your list of infrastructure needs.
I haven't heard anything about that particular public benefit that would indicate that would be a top priority for the community. Yeah, in fact, public safety probably would come before that.
Does the fact that philanthropy is involved in this proposal at 27 University have any bearing for you in the sense that Ariaga is committed to, apparently, spending his money to build this development and then gifting the entire thing to Stanford? Does that, is that relevant?
It would carry some weight. Because, for example, I supported punching the height limits on the Stanford campus for the hospitals because I clearly saw that the public benefit for having, you know, world-class healthcare facilities was something that was given to all. So if it was a shared community benefit and a shared community pain, it seemed to balance each other out. But there really needs to be a stepping back and having this objective standard applied to all. And I think we want to be very careful not to criticize or look a gift horse in the mouth. But it doesn't exempt the project from the same kind of scrutiny we would give to any other developer just because it's going to benefit the purpose of education for the next, you know, century. And, you know, the Stanford, this whole community has a value of education. And sometimes we say the city versus Stanford, but, you know, we are all in this together. And there's a lot of people in this community who have their whole heart here because they value that value of education that our culture has brought. So that has some weight, but it doesn't give you an exemption.
So I think in your survey, if I'm not mistaken, you answered that last question that you believe that the current city policy and the actions of the council skew towards giving too much to development interests as opposed to resident interests if we set up a dynamic like that.
I did state that directly, yes.
So can you describe how you would have voted differently on a couple of projects from the way this city council did that reflects that view?
I can't go back and put myself in their shoes and, you know, rework every single meeting and every piece of mitigating factor. But the Lucky Plaza on Alma, the closest to the road, is, it just seems so out of character and monstrous. The loss of a very valuable retail use. I know there's going to be some, but there's been a significant conversion to housing. What was the amount that they paid for future infrastructure use of the schools? I'm not sure that they really quantified that, that we spent a currency because we have infrastructure and we give it to the land and the developer gets the benefit from it. So those are the kind of things that I would go back and question. I can't really think through some of the other-
Are you familiar with the one here, the J.J.N.F. development, where in essence, the so-called public benefit was the retention of a neighborhood serving grocery store? These are same benefit as being used, was used at Alma Plaza and also at Edgewood Plaza. Would you have supported those, the trade-offs involved in those projects?
I think there would need to be a little bit more money involved for the infrastructure. Because I think we keep pushing infrastructure, both from our current budget and from the development. And I would be an advocate for that. Now, I didn't participate in evaluating the project.
But it's not so much then the density that concerns you about some of these proposals. It's the, it's the lack of extracting, it's not extracting enough money from the developer to offset some of these more soft costs that we have for infrastructure improvements.
Well, that would be the primary reason. But I am concerned about the density and its impact on our schools. And, well, how would I put this? I've found myself to be a residentialist and I'm concerned about preserving our neighborhoods and the traffic flow. And so I know that the world goes on and that housing is needed. But we've also brought in a significant amount of office development. And each time we bring in these significant office development, that brings in a job, which actually just puts our jobs to housing measure ratio more out of balance. And so I don't see the shared community vision about how we're going to address the A-bag. And we're actually taking some actions that are making things worse. And I haven't heard whether a voice on the council could push back on A-bag and approach it more on a regional basis. Because it's kind of like having a room that's full, you know? The room's full, the room's full. And let's look at our comprehensive plan. There may be some corners where we could build it out. For example, I have a large lot and I can build a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment on that. Maybe there should be some incentive, if we want to bring in housing units, for people to increase the housing within the comprehensive plan. And let's make sure that what's allowed specifically is built out before we start punching a hole in this kind of defense barrier that we've built for ourselves. Because we built the comprehensive plan as a way to have some kind of certainty about our future and what kind of town we were going to invest our entire lives in. And then to have that completely change right in front of you, that doesn't seem like fair, you know, at all.
Now, one big South Palo Alto issue is, of course, Coverly Community Center and what's going to happen with that. And I'm wondering what your vision would be for Coverly, educational, community nonprofit, something else, where would you like to see that go?
I benefit from having dance classes at Coverly. And I certainly want to make sure that there's provision in the vision for the kind of community services that have gravitated to that place right now. When I think of historical preservation, you think, people think of that as buildings and structures. But I also think of historical preservation as to how a place has been used. And it seems that that has a clear educational background. Now, it may not be a high school, a middle school, or whatever. But somehow, we do need to keep that in our arsenal for some kind of educational vision that would be shared by the community.
And that's, and the reasoning behind that is because it's always been used for educational purposes?
Well, there is that, Bill. And then one thing, we have lots of resources here and we have lots of innovation. What we lack is physical place. What we lack is a physical place to plant that. And pretty soon, we're going to be, turn ourselves into a office complex with no, might as well put a gate around it, and no space for the citizens to create from. You know, we created Stanford, but the base of Stanford was a lot of land. And we need to preserve some spaces for future creativity. And by having that there, I think our community has a wonderful opportunity to really think about what kind of next-century educational opportunities we're going to give to our children. Maybe it's not the K-1 through 12 and maybe it's not Stanford, but maybe it's about jobs in the middle. I mean, that's just one idea. And I think that'd be a really a fun thing to do. But unless you have a place to put those ideas, you can't have the conversation.